Good morning. I call to order the January 7th, 2020, meeting of the Salina County Board of Commissioners. Will Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick. Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
I ask you please stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now move to the public forum where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda.
Norman, Matt Salina, glad to see you four Commissioners made it through the holidays.
Yes.
That's in relation to what you said back in the holidays of 1718. I'm asking you guys to watch the public comments on television that Attorney General Dirk Schmidt said in relation to this population issue. It'll give you some direction. Watch it and listen to it, what he said. That's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the commission? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for regular business. Item number one.
Approve agenda for public forum as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda for the public forum as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve today's agenda for the public forum. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Item number two.
National stalking awareness month proclamation. Abby Hunter, victim advocate, D-VAC.
Good morning, Abby.
Good morning. Whereas stalking is intentional harassment, a pattern of behavior directed at a specific person, causing that person to feel fear and endangerment for themselves or their family. The variation in stalking behavior ranges from hang-up phone calls to more direct threats toward a victim. The likelihood of injury increases when the stalking behavior escalates over time. Whereas, under the laws of Salina County, Kansas, and all jurisdictions in the U.S., stalking is a crime. Whereas, the majority of victims are stalked by someone they know, typically an ex-dating partner or acquaintance, and three in four women killed by an intimate partner had been stalked by that same intimate partner. Whereas, the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas, or D-VAC, assisted 25 people who identified stalking as their primary victimization in 2018 with an array of services, including counseling, group support, crisis hotline call reception, information and referrals, criminal justice advocacy, civil court advocacy, protection order and medical help, safety planning and transportation. Whereas, the Kansas Bureau of Investigation reports that 190 protection from stalking orders were filed in Salina County in 2018. Whereas, the statistics do not represent the true incidence and prevalence of stalking for multiple reasons, including not all victims report the crime to law enforcement, and stalking is a tactic of domestic violence and sexual abuse, so it may not be reported as the primary form of abuse and victimization, although the victim has experienced stalking along with other forms of abuse. Whereas, many stalking victims are forced to protect themselves by relocating, changing their identities, changing jobs, and obtaining protection orders. Whereas, many stalking victims lose time from work and experience serious psychological distress and lost productivity at a much higher rate than the general population. Whereas, communities can better combat stalking by raising awareness, adopting multidisciplinary responses by teams of local agencies and organizations, and providing more and better victim services. And now, therefore, the City of Salina Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim January 2020 as National Stalking Awareness Month.
Okay. Abby, do you have any other activities planned this month or this week?
Yes. So, we've got a D-VAC Lunch and Learn at the library in the basement. It's a big room, they've got a big screen. And we'll be spending just a quick 30 minutes for each, 30 minutes for stalking, providing some information and then resources, and yeah, and then for human trafficking as well. But we'll start with stalking, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are there any other comments from Commissioners? Seeing then, I have a signed proclamation here for you, so if you'd like to come up and get that.
Yes, I would.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I guess I'm gonna call for action. I should've done it before I gave you the proclamation, but I'm quite certain it'll pass, so I would ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we declare January 2020 as National Stalking Awareness Month for Salina County.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we declare January 2020 as National Stalking Awareness Month for Salina County. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. The motion does carry. We'll move to item number three.
National slavery and human trafficking awareness month proclamation. Whitney Russell, parent-child advocate, D-VAC.
Good morning, Whitney.
Good morning. Whereas, millions of men, women, and children are victims of human trafficking, which is the second-largest and fastest-growing criminal industry in the world. Whereas, human trafficking denies victims basic human dignity and freedom and is based on recruiting, harboring, and transferring people through use of force, fraud, and/or coercion for the purpose of sexual exploitation or forced labor. It is a crime that can take many forms and tiers at our social fabric, debases our common humanity, and violates what we stand for as a country. Whereas, the U.S. Justice Department has identified Kansas as an originating state for human trafficking, and the most trafficking in Kansas involves local children. Whereas, in 2018, the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas provided advocacy and emergency services to 13 victims of human trafficking. Whereas, with improved victim identification, medical and social services, training for our first responders, and increased public awareness, the victims who have suffered this cruel crime can overcome the bonds of modern slavery, receive protection and justice, and successfully reclaim their rightful independence. And whereas, the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas is joining forces with victim service providers, criminal justice officials, and concerned citizens throughout Central Kansas and the United States to observe National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Together, we can commit to a society where our sense of justice tells us that, united we can eradicate this wrong and continue to fight for human dignity and the rights of every person. Now, therefore, the Salina County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims January 2020 as National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month and applauds the efforts of many victim service providers, police officers, prosecutors, national and community organizations, and private sector supporters for their efforts in opposing human trafficking in all its forms.
All right. I'll ask you the same question. Do you have activities planned regarding this?
I think she covered it. They'll be talking about it at the D-VAC Lunch and Learn after the slavery or the...
Okay. Well, we thank both of you for your efforts regarding these D-VAC and important issues regarding with the said association. Are there any other comments from Commissioners?
No.
I would take a motion then, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move we declare January 2020 as National Slavery and Human Trafficking Awareness Month for Salina County.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we declare January 2020 as National Slavery and Human Trafficking Awareness Month for Salina County. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. It does carry. If you'd come forward, I have another proclamation for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move to item number four.
RFA number 105-20, RFD number five, tanker purchase. David Turner, Rural Fire District number five, chief.
Good morning, Chief Turner.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I come before you today to get approval to go out to bid to replace the department's current 1995 tanker with a new apparatus. The current status of the apparatus we have right now doesn't meet current PPA 1901 guidelines as well as current NFPA 1500 guidelines. And overall, we bought the 1995 tanker used, so it's got higher miles on it than the rest of the equipment, plus we're having issues with the mechanically with the structural of the tank cracking, and we've had it welded several times. From this point going forward, I just think it's gonna be a cost prohibitive measure just to go ahead and replace it. So, my recommendation to you guys would just to let me go out to the bid process. I've done some research. I think the truck's gonna bring in about $250 to $265 overall price. I've checked into several financial institutions on lease purchasing like we've done our other apparatus. Community leasing out of Manhattan seems to be the best one that gives us the best factors and the rates. I'm looking at a yearly annual payment of about $26,000 to $30,000. That's kind of dependent on what the actual price has come back in on the unit. Budget impact at this time, it's really not gonna affect us too much because we just paid off a lease purchase last year from one of our other units, so we're just gonna roll that payment into this unit, so it really is not gonna affect us too much overall. And I'm just here to get your guys' approval and permission to go out for the bid process.
This says tanker, but I assume that includes the truck.
Yeah. It's an overall pumper tanker.
I'm a little bit confused by the RFA here from staff that it is a request to go out for bid, and yet on down there it says we're approving purchase. Am I reading something into that that's...
So, the action appropriately is to allow for Rural Fire District number five to go forward with the bidding procedure as well as the lease purchase through the financial institution, and then they would move forward with the bidding process.
Again, I guess I'm a little bit confused if we're going after the bid process and then we're allowing them to go ahead and purchase it. Is that what you're saying?
They would come back, once the bids come back, for final approval. This is just for approval for them to proceed with a bidding procedure as well as look at those financial leasing opportunities.
Okay. So, they will be coming back. I mean, we can give our approval to go out for bids, and when we get the bids, our obligation then will be to approve a bid.
Right. I would come back before you guys again with all the bids.
Right.
And we would decide on my recommendation on who to go with and your guys' approval from that point forward.
Okay. I guess just the wording of it is kind of gets me thrown a little bit aside when it says proceed with the bidding process to purchase a tanker, but it's the bidding process itself, not the purchase of a tanker yet.
That's correct.
So, are there other questions or comments from Commissioners?
What's the best deal, this tanker pumper?
The old one's 2,000. This one would be 2,000 also, 2,000 gallons. It's gonna have a little bit bigger pump on this new one, so I can classify as a pumper tanker to get the ISO points.
There you go.
Right now, it just gets the points for the water and not the pump side because it's just not a rated pump. This one would have a rated pump, so I would get the additional points for ISO, so.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to ask a question. Is that, is there anything like this that's available, like for used trucks and stuff? I mean, can you look at a demo unit somewhere and look at maybe getting a 2017 or 2016 model?
I can look at demos and see what they're, they have available out there. And that's, if you want me to proceed that way, I will. It's just in previous trucks, generally, they'll come back with the bid specification on the actual bid, and sometimes they will give you a demo unit that they have available at the time, so you don't have to wait the entire year to get the truck built and so on and so forth. And it will save, you know, quite, I don't know how much, but it would save some money.
I was just curious. Thank you.
The biggest issue is when you go use is the chassis. It's usually a higher mileage chassis because it's usually an over-the-road truck that they turned over into a fire truck, and that's what we've got right now. And as you can see, we've had numerous issues. Even when we purchased it from this point, it's just, it's kind of been a nightmare, but you learn from your mistakes and...
Dave, when you go out for this, what would be your best guess on how many people might reply? I mean, I assume that there's a fairly small group of...
I think we'll get probably four or five bids back.
Okay. And I, some local and some not as local, regional maybe like Iowa or somewhere like that or...
Wise firing, I think they'll build, would bid a Toine apparatus, which is our local guy here in town. And then you have Dankos Mill, like I said, Toine, Pierce will bid, they're out of Kansas City, so I think there'll be four or five bids come back.
Okay. That sounds appropriate. As an RFA is required here, it's been my policy to accept public comment regarding a, an RFA. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we proceed with the bidding process to purchase a tanker for Rural Fire District number five as requested.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve RFA 105-20, RFD number five, tanker purchase and bidding process. Is there any further discussion? All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. The motion does carry. Good luck.
Thank you.
We'll see you again. Our, excuse me, item number five.
RFA number 102-20, Resolution 20-2283, reappointment of Rural Fire District number three board members. Michelle Barkley, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning. I'm here to request approval of the appointment of, for the Board of Trustees for Rural Fire District three. This will follow the same appointments standards that I did last time before the end of this last year. So, their term will be from January 1st, 2020 to December 31st of 2022. We would like the appointment of these members. They are volunteers, and they serve their time for their respective districts. There is no budget impact, and last time we did appointments, there was a question to the standards of how many Board of Trustee members can be appointed, and I did attach the statute to it, and it says that the county commission may appoint a Board of Trustee no less than three members and no more than nine members.
So, currently, there are, will be only three people on this board then, is...
For this district, yes, three.
Okay. Any questions from Michelle? Any public comment? Bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we reappoint the RFD number three board members as listed in Resolution 20-2283 for another term.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 102-20, Resolution 20-2283, reappointment of Rural Fire District number three board members. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. The motion does carry. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Item number six.
RFA number 103-20, Emergency Management Performance Grant. Michelle Barkley, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning again, Michelle.
Hello. So, here I'm requesting the acceptance of an award that we were received for $33,303 for the 2019 Emergency Management Performance Grant that will be used to enhance and sustain emergency management. There's a 50/50 match required for this grant, and that match will be made from the Emergency Management Department's current operating budget. You can either approve or disapprove this grant. However, the grant amount from 2019 has slightly increased from past years that we've been awarded this grant. Staff recommends that we request the approval. These grant dollars are used and intended to be used to enhance and sustain all hazard emergency management programs for the county. Funds received through this grant go to assist in the deputy director position.
Sounds good to me. I mean, I always have a problem with turning down free money, so to speak, so... Are there other comments from Commissioners? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, hearing none, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the award amount for the 2019 Emergency Management Performance Grant as requested by staff.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 103-20, the Emergency Management Director Grant. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. We'll move to item number seven.
RFA number 101-20, bid award for motor graders. Darren Fischel, Road and Bridge Administrator.
Morning, Darren.
Good morning, Commissioners. We're here this morning to award the contract for the purchase of three new motor graders. Seal bids were opened on December 2nd of 2019 at the City-County Building. Four bids were received from two separate companies. Foley Equipment, they bid Caterpillar 150 motor graders, total purchase amount of $819,297. With a trade guarantee of these machines, $510,000 in five years, that leaves a total cost for ownership of these three machines at $309,297. That Foley Equipment also bid a Caterpillar Model 140, total purchase price of $763,083 with a trade guarantee of $465,000, that leaves a total cost price of $298,083. Murphy Tractor bid John Deere Model 770 GPs. Their total amount was $846,360 with a trade-in guarantee of $210,000. That leaves the total cost price of $636,360. The Murphy Tractor also bid 7670 GP machines at a total price of $781,287.22. The trade guarantee of $210,000. That left total cost at $571,287.22. Would kind of like to do a little definition of terms here since we still have some repurchase machine. Guaranteed trade means that in five years or 700 or 7,500 hours, the particular dealer is awarded the bid. This is the trade value that they will allow for those three machines. In a guaranteed repurchase, at the end of five years or 7,500, this is the amount the particular dealer will repurchase the machine for. These are guaranteed trade machines, so in the end of, at the end of five years, this is what they're gonna allow for a trade-in to them.
Okay. For year 2020, I'm looking down here, where, what's the number that we're gonna get back for the graders that we're trading in now or guaranteed buyback or whatever we had?
2020, and those were repurchase machines on what they called the buyback program. We are gonna receive $488,220 from Murphy Tractor for the John Deere 770 GPs going back.
And Foley?
Foley's, that, the...
Same amount?
There is no repurchase of the Foley machines this time because they were John Deere's purchased in 2015.
So, what is the number? Is this $309,000? I'm just using, if we go with the 2020. That's the number that we're actually gonna write a check for?
No. No. We are going to write a check for $819,297, okay? And then, in five years, they're, if we go with their machines, they're gonna give us $510,000 for those machines.
Okay.
And so, that means that the total cost for us to operate those machines for five years is $309,297.
And the machines that we're trading in this year, where is that number? Or where am I, I'm missing it?
Mr. Chairman.
The Murphy Tractors, those are the 488, 220. There's, Murphy Tractor's gonna buy those back.
Oh, all right. Even though the bid, assuming that we go with the lower bid, it's gonna be Foley bid.
Correct.
I assume that, and...
Those dollars will go back into our account.
So, the number in reality is gonna be seven, 300 and, or $819,297 less 488,000. It's just be two different transactions.
Correct.
Correct.
In the, in the end, correct.
And that end will be this year?
Yes, yes. In February, those machines go back in February 27th, I believe.
And do we have a guarantee that we're gonna have the replacements from Foley then at that time?
You know, I've been talking with the salesman, and he's here today, and they said they, if they can't get those machines, they would get us something to operate until the machines could come in.
Are you comfortable with that scenario?
I am. It's not uncommon. We've, we've been doing this for many years.
I still, I still go back to what I've said three years ago, and I have a problem with limiting our hours to whatever the number is. You know, in this, in this case, I think it's 7,500. I mean, it's kind of like buying a car, and you lease it for three years with 30,000 miles lease on it, and you get six months left in the lease, and all of a sudden, you're out of miles, you gotta leave your car set in the garage or pay a pretty good-sized penalty. So, I wish we could somewhere or another figure out how to do away with that guarantee that we're not gonna run them over those hours, but...
You know, it was looked at possibly, and I believe it was eight or 10 years ago, these machines used to be on a 6,500 hours, and that was too little. So, because we were having to park some machines early, and so then we went to the 7,500 hours. So, 7,000 hours is about the average that we will run these machines, some, some more, but mostly a little bit less.
Okay. I'll open it up for Commissioners to...
Quick question, Darren. So, the trade guarantee, that only holds if Foley gets a contract on any new purchases in, in the five years.
2025, yes, yes.
Otherwise, it would just be fair market value?
Yes.
Does, looking down the, down the road, does, do you think you get the, does history tell you that you get the best bid, knowing that they pretty much locked themselves into, it gives them a big upper hand when it comes time to bid?
It will, it will. You know, we haven't, and I'm gonna say this was three years ago, that the, the dealers or the manufacturers went to this guaranteed trade. Before that, it was the buyback, and, but we haven't gotten to that point yet.
Let me color a little bit different picture, and I think you might be able to, let's assume that in five years, there's a different market out there, and all of a sudden, instead of being worth $510,000, they might be worth $600,000. You will have the right to say, hey, we, and then, let's just assume it's Murphy Tractor, they would say those machines are worth $600,000. We'll give you $600,000 trade-in, and, but they would have the option of upping their, their trade-in allowance, I would assume at that time.
And that's happened before.
Yeah.
Even with the repurchase. The, the set it down amount was so much, but then they said, we'll give you more for the repurchase machines this year.
I don't mind a trade guarantee at all. I have a problem with locking us into, you know, that's all we're gonna get, or, you know, the other, the other company still has a chance to offer a trade-in value, and if there's trade-in value exceeds the 510 and puts him in a lower bid position, then that's the way we'll go. I've got no problem with doing it that, in that direction whatsoever.
When, when this went out for bid, were the, the three trade-ins, the John Deere 770s, were they part of that bid process of, of trade-in value?
They were offered for disposal, yes. The, anybody could have offered that amount.
And did, or did you have any takers?
No.
Darren, the, the 2020 machine, Caterpillar Model 140... Darren, the, the 2020 machine Caterpillar Model 150 versus the Caterpillar Model 140, I assume is horsepower or performance or?
It is.
And so, we're looking at $11,000, which is approximately $3,500 apiece if you go on an individual grader. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And your recommendation is for which one?
My recommendation is for the, the Model 150. And let me say, we recommend the 150. They're a more sufficient size and weight and horsepower to better meet the department's needs. The smaller motor graders, the John Deere 670 and the Caterpillar 12M3s, we were test purchasing the last two years have not been as effective in allowing the rural operators the ability to perform some of their functions adequately such as snow removal and ditch laybacks in a timely manner. Due to the manufacturer's changes in equipment designation numbers, the 140 motor graders are equivalent to the 12M3s that we have tested and the 150 motor graders are the equivalent to what we used to purchase.
Very good. Thank you. Are there other comments from commissioners?
Mr. Fischel, one of the things here a couple of years ago, and I know that they had a sheet out that had the cost of the repairs and the, the volume of fuel that they was all using it and that John Deere, if I remember right, was pretty much more, used less fuel and everything else than the Caterpillars. I mean, I was just wanting to check and see, have we looked at that also to put that into this here figure?
We did. And I'm going to tell you not for this year because at, at what the John Deere machines were bid at, it's so astronomically higher than what Caterpillar bid that we didn't even need to look.
Okay.
If it had been a little bit tighter, honestly, but we do look at those things. You bet, operational cost. And just to give you a little bit of those figures, with the, with the Foley Equipment bid for the 150, you know, you're talking at $14.73 an hour. Okay, now that doesn't include fuel, but that's, that's pretty reasonable.
And one other question I would have is that with all the floodings that we had this last year in 2019 is that, did any of these, I know that we had a lot more usage going with it. Did any of them catch up to their hours that was, that, that we had to park or anything on these?
No.
Did we put a lot of extra hours on them?
We put extra hours on them, but it, because we put that up to 7,500 hours a few years ago, I think we'll be fine.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
I guess one other scenario that I could envision is if Jeff, if the, if the other graders weren't here on, on time, would we be allowed to continue to use the graders that we have or do they need to go back for the purpose of their best value to the, to the supplier?
You know, they, they are on a contract to Murphy Tractor for February 27th, so I'm going to assume that on the 27th, they want those machines back. We had to notify them, that was part of the contract and so they will take possession of them on the 27th.
Okay, alright, I get it because we're sending them back to Murphy and we're buying Caterpillars more than likely. There's, that therefore, that brings into play the guarantee that they would provide a machine for us in a temporary basis.
And, and I've had assurances from them that they will.
Okay, and as long as you're, you're comfortable with it, I mean, that's your department, you're bailiwick and I'm, I'm good with taking your word for it. So, any other questions or comments from commissioners? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid for three Caterpillar 150 motor graders to Foley Equipment as requested by staff.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 101-20 bid award for motor graders, the one Caterpillar Model 150 as laid out in the RFA. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. The motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number eight.
Road and Bridge Update. Darren Fischel, Road and Bridge Administrator.
Good morning again Darren.
Again, hello. We have, it's been a busy quarter for the Road and Bridge. We have, administrative shop wise, we have started meeting with Kdam for the flood relief. Several meetings on how they want to get their information. We had a Purple Wave auction that netted...
Excuse me Darren, Kdam is Kansas Department of Emergency Management.
Kdam is Kansas Department of Emergency Management.
Thank you.
The flood relief is being administered through the Kansas Department of Emergency Management for FEMA, which is the federal emergency management system. We had a Purple Wave auction that netted $23,555. We sold a couple of used trucks and mostly this, this auction was the office furniture from the old building. We had, we had stored that and then we put it all together and that's what we did. We sent 18 employees to four different LTAP training courses, snow and ice control, concrete road maintenance, guard rail repair and bridge maintenance, and we also held three LTAP training classes in our, in our classroom. We also have been talking with, through human resources with Maryland Lemer. A possible partnership with Salina Tech to train CDL drivers because of the new laws and regulations and we'll be bringing more information to you on that also because that requires a contract. But we're, you know, looking, looking forward at trying to be able to train employees to get a CDL, though they're getting difficult to come by.
Very good. I, I have a question regarding, you mentioned it at the top there on FEMA. Do you have any clue, a guesstimate as to when we could expect FEMA funds to come our way regarding the floods? Is that a two, two-year process, three-year process?
So, they give you a roadmap when you start these scoping meetings and we're on Objective Three of about 15. So, yeah. I would say two years would probably be a good estimate. However, we were given a project manager who is very enthusiastic and I'm hoping that with the help of Weldy, we can get at least Road and Bridge taken care of a little bit quicker.
And if I recall, our, our portion of the costs were pretty close to a million dollars.
You know, yes.
And would you, and tell me how FEMA works, do, you know, in terms of proportionately, could we expect to get a million dollars back or will it just be a portion of that?
No. You know, our portion was about 970, that's what we, we spent was about $974,000. But you have to take out what they call the road classifications. They don't pay reimbursement on major collectors. So then we have to take those major collector roads out of there. And after we've done that, our reimbursable amount is somewhere around the $750,000 range. And then compensation, and this is just a ballpark, is going to be, I think, about $675,000.
A major collector would be something like Simpson Road or would it be something like North Street?
Old Forty, Simpson.
Okay, the, the blacktop roads basically.
Yep, Old Eighty-One. There are some, some gravel roads in there, which were the old RS routes.
And did you say they don't play, don't pay for the collector routes or they do?
Correct. They do not pay on major collectors.
That's strange. It seems to me like kind of backwards.
It's their rules.
Okay, well, thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt your, your presentation here.
No, no.
It's their rules and their money and we'll take what we can get.
And so, similar to what the rural operators did, we had a rural operator that retired down in the Gypsum area and he was, had his motor grader parked at his house. So, the fire station in Kip, we had a, a motor grader parked there, but it wasn't quite big enough to handle one more road, motor grader. We're working on getting the motor graders moved to county-owned property. So, we had to do some work at the fire station there, which is some grading and some drainage things for us to be able to park another motor grader there. And then we moved some fuel barrels in a shed in there. And so, that's, that's going to help in that area for snow removal too. He'll be right there next to the highway. And then we did Durapatch countywide. We had one snow and ice event. We did set up voting booths for the election. And then we, we did some drift removal countywide, which is kind of the end of the FEMA flood stuff. And this is just some drift in a creek, a few pictures of what that looks like, which is opening the channel. Some, some of these were on earth roads that we couldn't get to. So, once it dried up, we were able to get down and get these out. And we just take the excavator down there with the thumb and, and pick it up and set it in a pile and, and we'll go back and burn it later this winter. We don't say burn too loud in front of FEMA people. They don't really like that. And culvert work, we were able to get some of our culvert done. We replaced 25 culverts. This is on Waterwell Road before the pavement. We wanted to get this culvert replaced so we didn't have to go in and tear up new, new pavement. So, we replaced this one before the road was paved.
Is that east Waterwell or west?
That is, east Waterwell Road. And this is a culvert, two culverts actually in this location. And this is how long ago, this is how far the flood put us back. This work was planned last winter. That's not snow from this winter. There are two culverts that were washed out and, and bad replaced. And we went in and built what we call a Lego block, box. We purchased these Lego blocks here locally and then we put these beams on them that we bought from Purple Wave with a deck and then put some asphalt and a gravel top on it. This is an entrance, entrance box that got hit last October and this one was actually a accident. So, we had a report on this, so this one we'll get some reimbursement for. But this just shows how we attached the top to the, the I-beams, which is we rivet them And this is some sections of roadway that we built. We rebuilt five sections of roadway, McReynolds Roads, McReynolds Road between Kip and Gypsum Valley, Niles Road between Waterwell and Farley, Farley between Kip and Gypsum Valley and McReynolds between Kip and Gypsum Valley. It finally dried up enough, we were able to get in there and do some of those things. This is a road cut on Amos Road north of Campbell. If you've ever been back in there, it's a very primitive place. This was from the flooding. This is Niles Road between Waterwell and, and Farley. And when it floods here, this road becomes the river channel. And so, we went in there and rebuilt it. We did dig a pond for a property owner. That's where we came up with the dirt with this. We found some land close and, and just rented a dozer. And this is some edge wedge. We edge wedged three sections of roadway. Waterwell Road from the River Roads to Simpson, North Street from the East City Limits to East Borough, Shilling Road from Kip Road. And we call this edge wedge because it's not really shoulder. It's not meant to be, you know, pull over and park your car, but just to give somebody an opportunity should they drop their wheel off the edge of the asphalt. And for hauling aggregates, we hauled 510 ton of plant waste, 7,455 ton of crushed rock, 2,095 ton of AB3 and 5,175 ton of sand and 3,010 ton of dirt. That was for the rebuild on Niles Road. And then there's a flood report there. And there are four projects out there, or there are three now, that we are trying to mitigate, which is to get FEMA to pay some dollars so that it doesn't happen again. We had roads, channels that were cut into from the river that we're looking to have to purchase some right away and move the road. That's, that's all.
Pretty much the size of it. Well, it is a busy period, that's for certain. So, any other questions or comments from commissioners?
One quick question Darren, this probably might be a question for Justin, but I'll throw it to you. The chip seal that was done this past year, Burma, a couple other of the roads, was the process and the product the same on this chip seal as in the past?
It was not. The, prior to this year, we had used a cutback polymer and then we went to an emulsion oil and, and the materials have changed. We went to a CMK this year and I think we used a CMK last year, but it was a different oil.
It just seems to be of a different consistency and the roads are...
We are evaluating it because we have had some concerns about people, you know, the public calling us and, and we are evaluating the process with, and moving forward.
Other comments or questions? Seeing none, thank you Darren. Thank you very much. Pass along a good job, pat on the back to the staff out there. We'll move to item number nine.
RFA number 104-20, Resolution 20-2284, Review of Commission Districts. Hannah Stambo, Deputy County Administrator.
Good morning Hannah.
Good morning. Kansas state statute requires that the commissioners review the commission district boundaries and this is in an attempt to make sure that the population of the districts are kept as compact and as equal in population as possible. The district boundaries, boundaries were last set in 2014 and that was when the commission expanded from three to five commissioners. And in 2017, there were three new Greeley Township and then Precinct 36 was added, or pretty much, that's a better word, maybe reconfigured. Precinct 36 was created because it was annexed into the city and it is also in a different house district than the precincts that surround it. And then Greeley 1, Greeley 2 and Greeley 3 were created because initially, they were all part of the original Greeley Township. But when the clerk's office did a review, it was discovered that it wasn't adjacent to the original Greeley Township, so additional precincts had to be added and most likely due to just annexations from the city limits. These additions do not change the division of the population for the commission districts as was set in 2014. So, your alternatives here are to either approve the resolution or disapprove it. We do recommend the approval of the resolution that is attached, just so everybody is aware too that once the 2020 census numbers are released, we again, will review the commission districts to again, ensure that most compact and equal population distribution is possible for each one of the commission districts.
If we're reviewing those now, don't we have a three-year window to do it again?
Correct.
And is there a percentage that you have to work with or that we have to work with in terms of fluctuation of population between one district to the next?
No, again, the wording in the statute just says that the districts are as compact and equal in population as possible. So, if you look at the particular resolution, we do have, like, the first district has 10,858 and the second district has 11,140. But then the third district, 11,391, the fourth district, 11,178 and the fifth district, 11,039. So, this is a very, very, this is probably the most equal type of compaction.
500 votes or thereabouts is the max and most of them are, some of them are 12 or 13 votes or population differential.
Right. And this, I mean, this, certainly our GIS department, when we did expand the commission from three to five, this was a huge thing that we engaged their assistance with as well as in cooperation with the clerk's office to make sure that our districts were as, as equal as they possibly could be. So, I do have our, the precinct map that is up and Kevin, if you wouldn't mind kind of zooming in to where District 2 is at, because that's where the biggest paid, or that's where the biggest, this is where that precinct 36 and then the Greeley 1, 2 and 3.
District 2 is the green.
Yeah, the District 2. So, we're looking at the kind of blue area on the eastern edge of the city of Salina. And you can see the, if you zoom in, I think, close enough, it'll actually give you the, the precinct numbers too. If it shows up there.
And you say this is where we're establishing a new voting, a polling place or a new?
No, no. So, this is just basically just a realignment or renaming, readjusting due to different annexations that have occurred with the city of Salina.
Okay, so, so is District 2 getting some population from District 1? Is that what you're saying?
No, no. There is no redistribution of the population whatsoever. This is just basically kind of renaming and naming appropriately of the Greeley 1, 2, 3 and then Precinct 36. 2, 3, and then Precinct 36.
Oh, okay, now I'm catching on.
No, that's okay. Thank you, Kevin.
Questions or comments from Hannah?
I was told yesterday this is just a house cleaning item.
It really is, it really is. Again, the, I, kind of a little misleading, it's not really that these precincts were added, it's more less lines renamed appropriately.
Tell me this, Hannah, the population, or these numbers that we're going off of, were a census or a population number from, what, 2015, or?
No, so this, we, these would be off the census population numbers that happened in 2000, or 2010, sorry, 2010. And so 2020 is the next census that we will be going through, and that's what will help determine, again, the review of the Commission Districts in about 2022, 2023.
And again, even though, I don't know when the 2020 census will be completed or be established, but we would still have that three-year window going to, what, 2022, before we had to take action to reestablish some districts?
Right, absolutely. We should probably have the numbers from the 2020 census, probably about that 2022 timeframe, so we'll be well within to be able to review it 2023.
Okay, I follow you.
Yeah.
All right. I would take a motion for, well, actually, this is an RFA, so if anyone wants to comment, they may. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt Resolution 20-2284 as presented by staff.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve RFA 104-20, Resolution 20-2284, Review of Commission Districts. Is there further conversation or questions? Hearing none, all of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, the motion carries. We'll move to item number 10.
RFA number 106-20, 2020 Alcohol Funds, Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning, Philip.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. So, the state law provides a distribution of funds derived from the grocery receipts tax on alcohol to counties as well as cities, but specifies that that distribution of funds be divided by formula between our general fund and two special revenue funds, a special alcohol fund and a special parks and recreation fund, each of which have various restrictions on the use of those funds. In Saline County, our process has been to allocate those funds every other year by seeking applications from agencies that desire to use the funds for their designated purposes. For the 2020 and 2021 funds, applications were received in October of 2019. Six agencies applied for the special alcohol funds, and four agencies applied for special parks and recreation funding. I'd like to thank Commissioners Shadwick and Wees, who met with me on December 31st to review the applications and recommend the allocation of the funds as noted in the RFA. Could go into more detail if you'd like, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
My question would be, the special alcohol fund is allocated, I mean, all of these funds came, come from one place, and that's the special alcohol tax, is that how it's worded? And, but I see that the special alcohol fund distribution is greater than the special parks and recreation fund. How was that proportionally decided?
Okay, this is probably going to be way more information that you want, but-
Should I retract my question then?
So, what happens is the county receives funds from the unincorporated areas, and also a portion of the funding from cities under 6,000 in population. So, for example, alcohol establishments in Brookville or Gypsum, a portion of that funding flows to the county. And they, for the special alcohol funds, you take the first 23% off the top, and that goes automatically into the special alcohol fund, and then the remaining 77% gets divided a third, a third, a third. So that's why special alcohol has more money than what is received by either the general fund or the special parks and rec fund.
All right, I understand now. It's just not, it was just a matter of arbitrarily, the committee saying, we're going to give more to the special alcohol fund than the-
No, no, it was not arbitrary at all, it's, well, it might have been arbitrary, but it was on the part of the legislature, not the committee.
I think it would be worth noting perhaps for the public to know where we're distributing this money, and I'll read that, if that's okay.
You can, or I can?
The special alcohol fund, Dare and Great, will get approximately $4,400. Central Kansas Foundation, Friends of Recovery, and Ashby House will all get $1,750. Kansas Wesleyan University, $2,800. The 28th Judicial Community Corrections, $4,800, under the Special Parks and Rec Fund. The ARC of Saline County will get, all of these will get $1,879. ARC of Saline County, the 4-H Council, Assaria Youth, and the City of Gypsum. So, we're happy to be able to distribute those funds to those organizations, so hopefully it'll make a difference. Other comments from Commissioners, questions?
I think, I don't have the numbers here. Phil, you might, you might have them, that there was an increase in this year over years past. Do you have those numbers? Am I putting you on the spot there?
The total amount to be distributed in special alcohol is 17,331, and in special parks and rec is 7,517. The funds vary from year to year, so that's actually, I would say, long-term, it's on a downward trend, so those numbers are less than they were five, six years ago. They are higher than what was distributed in 2019. I believe it was about 6,000 in special parks and rec in 2019, and I don't have off the top of my head the amount on special alcohol, but it was a little less than the 17,331.
So total this year, it's real close to $24,500 for 2020 that we're going to distribute, or from the 2019 receipts for 2020 distribution?
Yes, and this, these are the amounts that were budgeted in your 2020 budget.
Right.
And we don't know 2021's amount yet.
Correct.
But we are voting-
Well, we will bring this back.
We will.
How this has been done in Saline County is, we do the allocation annually, but we don't accept applications except every other year. So we will not accept a new round of applications. We will just evaluate these agencies, these 10 agencies, make sure that they have spent the funds appropriately, and if they have, we'll bring back an item to you at the end of this year or the beginning of next year for the distribution of the 2021 funds. So you will have an opportunity, you're not locking the 2021 funds in stone, you will see them again, but this is just what I would plan to bring to you if everybody complies.
Okay, any other questions? Is there any public comment?
Maybe I missed it, Norman, Manlesline. Does the city contribute any of these funds?
No, this is, this is, these funds came from, come from areas outside of the city of Salina.
That's-
The unincorporated areas, along with the, do we have two incorporated cities?
Yeah.
Brookville and Gypsum, I believe, are-
Well, there would also be New Cambria and Assaria, but I'm not sure if they have alcohol establishments.
You know, I think the Quick Trip, or whatever it is down at Assaria, might sell some to go, I don't know that for sure, but I know New Cambria doesn't sell.
Well, my question, Bob, is this, these businesses that are in the city, they're still in the county, why aren't we getting a part of that? Okay, okay.
Good question.
And I can address that if you'd like, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, have at it.
Yeah, but, so the city of Salina would also receive a distribution from the state, so they would go through their own process. And of these places that are recommended, many of these agencies serve the city of Salina as well. So, for example, Central Kansas Foundation, Ashby House, they're located within the city of Salina, so.
All right, thank you. I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we allocate the 2020 special funds as listed in RFA number 106-20 and recommended by staff.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve RFA 106-20 for the 2020 alcohol funds distribution as recommended by staff. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign, motion carries. That concludes today's action items. Is there any other business or announcements to come before the Commission? Anything from this side of things? That having been said, I will take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adjourn today's meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign. We're adjourned.